Good morning, everyone. The May 19th, 2021 Special Meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. I'm going to ask Mr. Paul Rohr to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask us all to stand and face the beautiful flag that Eric has placed in front of us for us to say the Pledge of Allegiance with. So please stand. Mr. Rohr.
All right, unmuting myself, and thank you for the flag, that's nice. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America. For which it stands. One nation under God. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you, it's a funny experience for me because I hear your echo and I was like, like I wasn't quite sure, but that was nice, thank you ma'am.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications.
Thank you. Oral communications pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, the public may directly address the legislative body or city council members concerning items that have been described in the notice of special meeting.
Have there any comments been received by phone or email?
There is one person who would like to speak on this item. If you give me a minute, we will get her on the line. One moment, thank you for your patience.
Ms. Valentine, just FY that Ms. Angie English is not present, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
While we're waiting, I realize I neglected to do the roll call, so I'm going to do that now. Can we do the roll call, please, first?
Yes, if you don't mind, I do have Ms. Lynette Williams on the line, so I'm going to allow her to speak and then we'll go back to doing roll call if that's okay with you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams is on the line and she wished to speak to the council pertaining to today's item. Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Hello, good morning, everyone, good wonderful morning, Lethal Williams here. I wanted to say to the Gabe group, thank you so much for coming to the city of Hawthorne showing more interest in redeveloping this two-score sitting property. It is really appreciated by the community, however, we're proud of our council people going right to the drawing board to apply tax amendments to assist you guys when you bring on tenants into this site. It is really important that how the city council, our city council have went right away and added this to our zone laws. And we're really proud of them for doing this, however, I met Mr. Gabe, had the pleasure of meeting him at our city address meeting at the Memorial Center a couple of years ago. A very nice spoken gentleman and shows interest in his property as well. However, it is time to get the ball moving down toward the finish line to go ahead and submit marketing to our city to see what's going to be over there. And no love is going to be lost if you don't want to have housing because the property is in straight guideline for airplanes flying over and you have a constant train running through that property, so there won't be no love lost. However, it is important and said that to bring things in that will bring revenue and tax revenues important to our community because the Gabe group has a very, very impeccable history of building things around in the, on the West Coast, period, on the West Coast. They have a lot of things going, so consider us as being, wanting to be moving toward that next level towards bringing the tax revenue. However, we're saying definitely production companies, tech offices, and even towards shopping come with the outlet. Things that other cities don't have, Applebee's restaurant, a cheesecake factory, Olive Garden, a bowling alley. A bowling alley, a skating rink, even an international fish market is something that a lot of other cities don't have. And there's a thing on Las Vegas Boulevard, M&amp;M store. M&amp;M store has got customers coming from all over that is full until the time it opens, to the time they close. And if you want other properties to be a home, we got lots of space here for you to come and do some marketing for other people that's interested in your property. And if you have an AdCo, AdCog committee, please accept some of, a couple of the residents. I, Lethal Williams, would love to be on that committee and I thank you so much for my time.
Thank you for your comment and your civic participation, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to address these bodies?
There were no more requests that were received at this time.
So at this time, I will declare oral communications closed, so ordered, and we'll go back to the roll call.
Okay, I'm online, guys, so thank you, appreciate that, Mayor Protem.
Oh, you're welcome, and we, I neglected to do the roll call at the beginning, so we need to do that now.
Okay.
Thank you, with that, we'll start, Mayor Vargas.
Here.
Mayor Protem Valentine.
Here.
Councilmember Montero.
And present.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
And Councilmember English. I'd like to reflect that Councilmember English is not present.
It's an excused absence.
Thank you so very much.
Okay, so, thank you, thank you for that.
So we're ready to begin, Mayor.
Okay, sounds good.
If I may read item number four.
Yeah, well, I like to welcome everybody and I'm glad, how many, how many oral communications do we have, did we just have that one?
Just the one with Ms. Williams.
I got to hear it, so, all right, go ahead.
Thank you, so item number four is a council study session is regarding the development of the Hawthorne Mall site, which is located at 12126 Hawthorne Boulevard. At this time, the city council will entertain a discussion with representatives of the mall site. If you could please announce yourself, whomever is on the representative side for the mall.
Good morning, this is Paul Rohr with Loeb and Loeb here for the developer. And I'm also accompanied today by my partner Elizabeth Camacho, who's our land use expert, who I think you've heard from before, and with the representative of the owners, Sarah Withers. And I believe, Eric, you have a PowerPoint to put up and we can work from there, if that's easier.
Yeah, I can go ahead and share it for you guys, one second.
Thank you, Eric.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. City Clerk. So we'll just go ahead and take a look at your presentation and then we'll, and then we'll proceed from there, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I think I'll begin this presentation and then we will shift over to Ms. Camacho, since she can give you the actual helpful bit. So if we can go, this is our first page, let's skip, we can skip two pages to the next page, please, Eric. I don't think I have the power to change this, I think it has to be done by you. Okay, so I just kind of wanted to reframe, you know, sort of to put it, to understand what it is that we're doing. So I don't want to get off on a tangent in terms of what are our sort of short-term goals, what it is we're doing, why we're here, et cetera. I do want to, though, first say, give a shout out really to Ms. Williams and what she said, and I think, you know, she probably summed up what all of us think on both sides of this, which is, you know, we got to get something done. And I think what you hear is, is that you have a constituency that wants something done and, you know, wants you to put pressure on us to get something done, but wants it done. And I think that's the bottom line, right? We need to have something to show the constituents, right? They're not our constituents, they're our customers, they're our people, and they're your constituents. I think that was a very helpful frame. Let's talk about what we're doing, because this isn't really, we're not asking for entitlements in this, and we can't be asking for entitlements in this, right? What this is, this is a creature of dispute that arose between the city and the Gabbes. So that's, I just wanted to sort of give a brief history and explain that and then go on to like, you know, what our sort of end game is and let Ms. Camacho talk about where we are in terms of planning. So in October of 18, we started getting these citations. The old city manager is on record, you know, in a document that we got through public request, you know, basically saying, well, we're going to do this to harass the Gabbes into selling. And, you know, we tried to work with them, and then again, that was the old city manager, the old city attorney, and it's not on anybody who's here, but we didn't really get anywhere. At that point, we started to appeal and then we filed with the Superior Court, also just sort of in the defense of that. During this whole time, I mean, I got to tell you, with Russell, with Arnie, you know, I kept saying, this is crazy, going down a rabbit hole, let's not do it, but I don't think I was heard. September 1st of 2020, we submitted a settlement offer, I don't know if you guys ever saw it. January 26, we submitted a settle off, settlement offer, if you may have seen. And let's go to the next slide, and that, that's sort of the history in that side. So then let's get to what we did as of March 1st, and this is, and I want to give a shout out here to Melissa Crosswath, Ms. Crosswath, in your city attorney's office, outside counsel that you got on this, I mean, I think this is a credit to a good team that we got this interim agreement in March 1st, right? After all this fussing, we finally sat down and said, hey, let's get it together. Now, these study sessions are a creature of that, right? I mean, this isn't a planning thing, you can't give us an entitlement here. We're doing this in order for both sides to sort of check each other out, check out what their ideas are, and move on from it, right? I mean, this is not a place where you can say, oh, guys, go ahead and build that, I mean, we haven't done anything, you don't have the power to do that now, and that's not our expectation. We really wanted to listen to you and make sure that we were coming forward with a project that matches up to what your desires are. I think that the problem we have sort of in critical path is our interim agreement is expiring June 1st. We've submitted a draft, you know, more permanent, it's not permanent, but you know, a longer agreement, an actual settlement agreement. And let's switch to the next page, if you will. Thanks. So here's what we want to avoid, what I think both sides want to avoid is litigation, right? We've said this over and over, that the problem that we have is you guys don't have the power to really take this away. I know you talked about, oh, we'll use eminent domain, but you know, it's like $200 million and you'd have to use it for government purposes. So if you guys want to do a bond issuance for 150, 200 million and have a giant dog park, God bless you, but I don't think that's happening. And we can't really do what we want to do without you giving us discretionary approval, so litigation really isn't helpful, but let's just talk about it for a second. Just because I want to put it out there, what happens is if we don't settle, we're going to Superior Court. The Superior Court, this is, it isn't a red action, they're not, there's no deference to what your administrator, your arbitrator, whatever you called her, is, says, there's none of that. It's just, it's going to be court, and then we have an appeal run, so this will take, I don't know, I have a case now that started in 2016 and is wrapping up. So that's four or five years, it's millions of dollars, there's going to be depositions, which is going to bother everybody, you know, officials, staffers. You know, we're going to have to talk about city administrative practices, you know, things that may not have been done correctly in the past, and so that's not pleasant. Then we have, you know, the city's in a potential liability for repayment of fines and also for inverse condemnation, meaning you guys have devalued the property by like not letting us sell it or badmouthing it, et cetera. So, but this isn't, I mean, I don't want to go there, right? I'm saying this is out there because it's a parade of horribles, and it really is a parade of horribles. There's nothing that either of us gets from that, right? All we get is heartache, maybe we win a couple of bucks, but I don't think that's, in the big picture, that's not what anyone wants. So let's go to the next slide. Okay, so let's talk about what we've actually done under the interim agreement. Let's talk positively, and now I'm going to give you over to Ms. Camacho, who will go through the sort of more technical details. I'm just sort of trying to give, like, a position us of where we are. So under that interim agreement, we said we'd have these three study sessions, which we've had. We said we'd allow for an inspection, which was done. We said we'd have a traffic concerns meeting, which was done, and we've done things to address those concerns. We submitted the landscaping and fencing plan as was required. You guys had comments that were perfectly reasonable comments, to be honest, and I think we got back with a reasonable answer. It hasn't been closed, but I think there's been no argument in any of that. There were some fees that Gabbay owned and owed and we repaid them. The city's supposed to do a refund, but that's still pending, but you know, I don't want to bust into council shops. Then what we need to do is, and we submitted our new draft settlement agreement on May 7th after speaking with council, your legal, not this council, but legal council. Okay, so June 1st is our kind of drop dead date, and that's what we're trying to get away from. What's our next slide, please? Eric? Okay, so at this time, let's start talking about what we have, the existing specific plan, what it allows, what it doesn't allow, the sort of changes we're going to need to make, et cetera. And I'd like to turn you over to Ms. Camacho because she understands these things any better than, well, certainly better than me. So Elizabeth, would you mind taking you over?
Sure, my pleasure. Good morning, council members, again Elizabeth Camacho of Loeb and Loeb. I'm going to pause here before talking about this slide, just to sort of recap briefly what, what we think we learned from the city in terms of the city's objectives during this process, and we'll talk about them more in some detail. But just briefly, you know, we learned that we want to limit the number of residential units to 608 approximately, which is the number that was studied in the, in the EIR that was done for the specific plan. We've learned that we want, or that the city council wants to engage and activate with Hawthorne Boulevard. We've learned that we must incorporate public open spaces. We know that we need to attract and provide certainty for a broad range of potential end users with a diverse array of permitted uses and development options, so that we have, you know, something that can really attract and bring in the types of users that we want to revitalize this space. We've also heard in our study sessions most recently that it is, it is very important to the city that we do all we can to work within your existing specific plan. We know this was a big lift for all of you to go through the process, take community input, and really think carefully about the policies and the objectives that are identified in the specific plan, and we certainly respect that and generally agree with it. And I think that we would, we would like to be able to avoid making changes to the specific plan. I think that where the changes really need to focus are on revisions to the zoning code, which is implementing the specific plan. And, you know, we don't know for sure that there would never be a need to make some modifications in the specific plan, but certainly I think we can agree that that would be our objective, to try to stay within that and to avoid that to the extent that is possible. And so to talk a little bit about the specific plan, this specific plan, of course, has a number of different objectives and allows for a number of different things. But one of the things that I think is important to focus on and acknowledge is that there is a focus on trying to generate employment uses, employment generating uses, with some flexibility for what those different types of uses might be, right? And so when we get to the Hawthorne Mall in particular, this is, this slide is a page from the Chapter 4, the transformative projects section, and this is the mall's page. One of the things that is, that is identified as a development guideline is to include flexible office and research space that could become an incubator for startup companies. And so if we can go to the next slide. And I, we tried not to make this too wonky for all of you, but I do think it's helpful to focus in on some of these documents, at least briefly. And again, I know the type is small, we've tried to bring out some of it here to show you. So when we're talking about some of these employment uses in a 21st century work environment, the specific plan recalls the thriving aerospace industry that Hawthorne enjoyed for many years and notes the recent investments that have been made in the city by innovative companies like SpaceX and Tesla. And it talks about a renewed focus on Hawthorne as a major employment center with the focus on creating a dynamic employment. Can we go to the next slide? Okay, and now this page from the specific plan is explaining the land use designation, and there's, of course, a diagram that shows the designation for the Hawthorne Mall site. And I know the type is small here, but the type, the designation for Hawthorne Mall, of course, is mixed use under the specific plan. And when you look at the discussion of mixed use here, it really is, again, focused on, you know, employment generating uses and flexible space to locate and grow businesses, incubator spaces that will be a key area the city will use to focus new employment growth in coming years. And then when we get to actual implementation, so there are actually no uses that are authorized per se in the specific plan, okay? It designates the land for certain categories of use, here we call it mixed use for the mall, and then it, then it provides that those uses or those designations will be implemented via the zoning code with specified zoning designations. And so here, for the mall, the zoning designations, of course, are mixed commercial, which is known as CM, and automobile parking. And so here, I think, is where we get to what we see as a disconnect between some of the objectives of the specific plan and the zoning code. And that's, I think, where we really would like to focus the work that we think needs to be done. And of course, you know, again, I want to acknowledge that, you know, the specific plan doesn't only focus on these types of, you know, incubator spaces and employment generating uses, but this is a key factor, and it's really, I think, you know, something that we think will be very attractive to a number of users. Can we go to the next slide? Okay, so now we've transitioned from the specific plan to the zoning code. And the zoning code for the mall is the mixed commercial CM zoning designation, that is the only zoning designation for the mall site, and it is, I think, the only place in the city that the zoning designation is used. And when we look at the purpose as stated in the zoning code for this zoning designation, it has a strong emphasis on residential and residential combined with some very traditional and fairly limited commercial uses. So I've just sort of highlighted here where we're talking about residential and the focus on making a use that is compatible with and combined with residential. This is sort of where I think we start to sort of have a little bit of a disconnect to the focus, because this is very different from the way that the mixed use land use designation is described in the specific plan. And again, to say that we will not have residential because, you know, that there'll be a component, but that is not the only focus. So if we can go to the next slide. And here, we have tried to sort of excerpt out the uses that are currently permitted by the mixed commercial zoning designation and the uses that we would like to see as part of this sort of smorgasbord of options and diverse types of uses that should be allowed to be able to attract the types of tenants and users that we ultimately need. So if you look at the column on the left, of course, you know, this is the uses currently permitted, and we've quoted this language at the top that, that this is a limiting, this is a limiting list, right? So it's not intended to be examples, it's not intended to be a starting point, it's, these are the uses that are allowed. And if they're not expressly listed here, they are prohibited. And so this is a really, really important list to focus on and a language that we need to really drill, drill down on to make sure that it's one inclusive enough of all of the uses that we need and clear, because, you know, the city has a lot of defined terms in its zoning code, and they're not always used in the uses as they are described in the current zoning code for the mixed commercial designation. Okay, so if we look at the uses that are currently allowed, we do have hotels, we do have office, but it's professional and medical office, and we have, you know, financial services, we have residential, we have restaurants and bars, retail service uses, studios, which we'll come back to in a second, art galleries, short-term rentals, and ADUs. And, you know, we don't have an issue with including any of these things, of course, this is all fine, but it's just too limited. And then again, you know, there are some details that are unclear. So for example, studios, I think, is written as, you know, sort of a whole host of things, you know, martial arts and yoga and even media production. But studios is actually a defined term in the zoning code, and it's not as broad as sort of what seems to be described here. So that's, that kind of thing introduces a lot of uncertainty, and that's just one example. The other thing that we'll talk about a little bit more later is that a number of these permitted uses require process and further discretionary review, which is something that, of course, is of great concern to a potential end user who may be worried that there will be a protracted entitlement process with lots of uncertainty, you know, and for, you know, really pretty, pretty straightforward uses. So we'll come back to that in a minute. On the right, we have our list of desired uses, and these are uses that are not expressly listed in this code section that identifies the entire units of, or permitted uses in the mixed commercial zone. And again, some of these are entirely left out, for example, the first one on the list, research and development. And again, I think we saw some language in the, in the specific plan that talked about research, that talked about, you know, incubator and innovative uses, but research and development is not in the list of permitted uses in the zoning code currently. You know, aerospace, creative office, you know, creative office here is an area where we kind of get into some lack of specificity and uncertainty. You know, creative office, we've got these new terms now, right? We've got flex uses down here. Some of these are terms that, you know, people may not necessarily have a common understanding when they use them. And, you know, I think that office would be allowed in, you know, sort of the very traditional sense, perhaps it would be allowed if you decide to have more of an open layout for your office, kind of like a WeWork situation potentially, although, you know, that's not spelled out. But if you want to do anything else that's more innovative, I think that, you know, there's definitely a concern that this is not currently permitted in the code. So, you know, we've got some other uses, and these are sort of the newer technology uses, digital streaming, e-commerce. Flex uses, we talked about a little bit, and we'll come back to that later. Healthcare, again, there are certain uses that are permitted, but, you know, it's not as broad as it could be to attract the uses that may be interested. Laboratories, again, the key part of research and development. Media content production and post-production, again, you know, we think this is a very important potential use and it really needs to be spelled out and clearly permitted. And urban farming, which is, you know, again, I think, you know, the kind of new and innovative use that I think is exciting to a lot of people, that would, that would attract a lot of users to a revitalized or a location that's seeking to revitalize, and that would be something that would really be attractive to the community. Okay, can we go to the next slide? This is just intended to help us focus a little bit on a couple of examples of things that are not currently permitted, and I touched on some of these already. But specifically with respect to healthcare, we do have medical offices permitted, but we don't have hospitals and we don't have clinics. And clinics in particular, you know, those kinds of things, you know, we get into a whole argument about what is an office, what is a clinic? You know, healthcare is changing the way that it's delivered, it's becoming very retail focused in many ways, and we need to be expansive enough. in many ways, and we need to be expansive enough to be, you know, to be inclusive of a lot of these innovative uses and different options within the healthcare field. Flex uses, we talked about again. Really, I think the only thing that we have in the current code is office with a flexible floor plan, meaning that you've got a lot of, you know, individual workstations instead of, you know, closed offices, or you've got big, you know, collaborative tables and not closed offices. And that's wonderful, but that's not enough. Incubator industries, tech startups, the modern retail commerce, and many other uses need true flex uses. And what that really means is allowing a company to combine a number of different functions that are essential to its business in one space and in a way that allows them to continue to adapt as the business grows. This is especially important for startups, right? Who can't afford to have, you know, multiple spaces and maybe small and really need that flexibility. So that's really the intent of flex use, and that's not something that is permitted in the code currently. We talked about research and development, again, not allowed. And then this is one of our sort of concepts for, you know, a new term that we might include, which we're calling creator commerce, it can be called a number of things. And these are really the component uses that you would need in a true flex space, the ability to do things like design and creation and testing, cooking, preparing, producing, and the list goes on. You know, there would be a tension to making sure that these are not, you know, true nuisance uses, you know, we're not looking to do dirty, heavy manufacturing here or anything like that, of course. You'd have to be sure that they, you know, did not create excessive, you know, odor and dust and glare and those kinds of things. That would all be addressed, but this is a concept that we think is left out and should be included. And one thing that I will add here is that, going back to Ms. Williams' comments from the public comment period, I think entertainment uses is another use that really is not spelled out at all in the permitted uses. So if you want a skating rink or a bowling alley or something like that, you know, that is something that is currently left out of the zoning code. Okay, can we go to the next slide? So this is actually a screenshot of all of the uses that are permitted in the mixed commercial zone currently. And we've talked about them already, but I have them here with some yellow highlighting just to show that many of these by right uses, or they're not by right, many of these uses are subject to conditional use permits or other process. So hotels, even offices, if you're going to have an office on the first floor, ground floor, you need a conditional use permit. Residential uses need a conditional use permit, of course, bars and restaurants. And then if there's something that doesn't quite fit in here and it needs to be interpreted in order to be included, there's an interpretation and a process that has to be followed. And I highlight all of this just to show that, you know, I think that a potential end user looks at this code and thinks, one, it is not expansive enough, and two, it is very burdensome and carries tremendous uncertainty. And what we would like to do is to be able to streamline implementation of, you know, all of these permitted uses by providing some, you know, performance standards or guidelines like the open space and the activation of Hawthorne Boulevard and those kinds of things, but make it something where, you know, someone can know exactly what they need to provide and then can come in and have a lot of certainty that the city is going to allow them to do what, you know, what the zoning code provides. And again, that's a process that we would work through to try to streamline as much as we can. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, so I think we might have skipped one, which is fine, I'll just stay, there we go. Thank you so much. So the revisions that we need here, I think, you know, when we dig into this, I think that city staff and the city attorney, you know, will agree with us that implementing these desired uses really does require amendments to the zoning code. And I think that in order to really provide the specific amendments, there's going to be a lot of detailed work and collaboration that needs to happen between the city staff, their council, and the developer and their team. Let's go to the next slide. This is again, just to sort of focus on what some of those amendments are, limiting the total number of residential units to 608, because currently it is unlimited, except for the density limitations. Ensure that Hawthorne Boulevard is activated with restaurants, retail and public spaces. This is something that we would want to write into the zoning code. Provide certainty to end users with a full explication of the permitted uses as we've been discussing. And then create structure that allows us to really streamline the utilization and implementation to get those approvals in a way that is efficient, that provides certainty, and that helps everyone understand where they stand when they come in with a project. Next slide. And I know you probably can't read this well, because the type is way too small, but we did want to provide just sort of, you know, a sense of what we're working on with respect to the language. And this, what this is, is this is, again, the permitted uses section of the current zoning code for mixed commercial with some of our edits to do the things that we've just been talking about doing, adding the uses like research and development, like laboratories, like creative commerce, and making some modifications. So I have, for example, you can't really see it, but in residential uses, you know, we thought here is where we might put the limitation to 608 units. And, you know, make some changes to process. This is not final, this is by no means all that would be needed, but we just wanted to give you a sense of sort of, you know, the extent and of the changes that are needed here and, you know, of the way that we have started to dig in to making some language modifications. And this is something that we'd like to continue to work on with staff. Go to the next slide? Okay. So here, I'd just like to briefly recap before we turn it back to Paul, what we think needs to be done. We think that we need to sort of dig into this in a little bit more detail and provide the actual proposed amendments to the zoning code, which, you know, where there's going to be a number of places we'll need to work on this, we'll need to work on definitions and changes, of course, within the mixed commercial section of the code itself. There will be a requirement for SEQA review, which, you know, we certainly hope we would be able to do via an addendum staying within the envelope of what was studied previously under the specific plan, planning commission review, and then city council review and approval. And again, you know, until this comes to the city as a proposal, you know, there is nothing that has been decided. This is a process that the city, you know, will go through and be able to provide lots and lots of input and comment and finally make their decision. So we've tried to lay out a work plan and a timeline for how this would work, and this is similar to what I think we've discussed before, we've updated a little bit, you know, where we outline the program, engage the consultants, and start the necessary studies, and then finish up all the technical changes and amendment language and prepare the SEQA documentation. And then, you know, we're hoping sort of by fall that we could start public hearings on the process. So this sort of gives an overview, you know, of next steps where we go from here and the timeframe in which we would hope that this could be accomplished. And I think with that, I will ask for the next slide and turn this back over to Paul to wrap up.
Ma'am, and for you and the other gentleman, we need to make sure that you guys provide us with these PowerPoints so that we could enter into the record through our city clerk's office, please, okay?
Certainly.
Yeah, just, I don't know if our city manager has that or anything. Right after the other gentleman finishes his statements, I'm going to turn it over to our planning director so he can do his spiel before we ask any questions from our city council member colleagues. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Vargas, I just really kind of wanted to wrap up with a conclusion here, which is to say, you know, sort of reiterate that these three study sessions are outside of the regular planning process and are really just sort of a discussion for us to get to know each other before we go through it in the manner that Ms. Montor described. And obviously, you can't do, this was never intended as an opportunity for you to grant entitlements, and you couldn't do it, I mean, because we haven't gone through the process. What I think is important here, and what was intended, I believe, when we went into this, is to give each side an opportunity to show their good faith commitment to trying to make something work. I think that you're seeing from us a real dedication to making something work. The owners are committed to finding a way to have something happen there, whether it's through a new tenant, whether it's through a sale, whatever it's through, we want to get it done, and we want to get the proper planning that allows it to get it done. And that's why we're here to work with you on that. And the idea of, you know, like spending the next several years fussing over administrative fines for something is like the silliest use of our time possible. I mean, it's probably good for us, because we're lawyers, and it's probably good for your outside counsel, but it may not be good for anybody else on the planet. So we're hoping that we can find a way to get together, enter into the settlements agreement by the end of this month, and then to have us work with staff and your council to come back in front of you through the regular planning process to get the entitlements that have been described here today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm going to ask our staff, yeah, and if you could pass those PowerPoints, if they haven't been done so, to our city manager or staff. Greg Sojuchi? And I guess you, it sounds like you'll be supported by our city attorney or Melissa Crossway, if necessary, right? But the main presenter is Greg?
Sure, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Eric, I have a one-page slide, nothing as elaborate that was shown, but we did this real quickly. Does the whole page fit on there?
Right, as is, if you want to leave it like that, but...
Yeah, so it was mentioned before, but I'd like to point out just one, where this whole thing focuses on for staff. It was pointed out that the last bullet point in permitted uses is other establishments when not specified as prohibited below and subject to interpretation of the director of planning, director of planning. So now, if you go back and you keep that in mind, you know, we focused on four categories that were presented on a previous presentation, and they were tech office campus, creative media and production, mixed use residential village, and R&amp;D industrial. And so staff went back and we looked at, what do we allow a tech office campus here? And whether, there's actually two regions that make up this mall site. There's mixed commercial, which is the dominant one, and there is a small section of regional commercial, but it's not that significant. I just wanted to bring out that detail. But for tech office campus, office in general is allowed in the zoning code. We look to the specific plan for interpretation and guidance when we have to make an interpretation. So, you know, tech office is pretty broad. I imagine it's something like a small Google or some sort of a technology type of startup business, and it would be allowed, especially with my interpretation of office and maybe technology office, that's similar to office and professional. So that would be allowed. Studios, that was also previously mentioned, it actually specifies media production. And so in the slide, it had creative media and production. And so we saw that, well, that is already allowed by our code. Mixed use residential village, you know, our code allows for mixed use development, combining residential and non-residential. And then the other one was research and development industrial, and similar to it was identified, there's different types of R&amp;D. You know, I focused on three of the more familiar ones, which is either it's R&amp;D for a new or improved service, could be like training or someone producing training manuals. I used to work at Nissan Motor Company. There was an R&amp;D that just did that type of service, internal service R&amp;D, R&amp;D for new or improved processes. So if they're looking to improve or make their processes more efficient, those things will be categorized as similar to office using the specific plan as guidance. That's my interpretation, I would interpret it as similar to office. Now, the one outlier is research and development for a product, if that's what they were referring to. The research is obviously similar to office space, but, you know, is it a prototype development? Software application or gaming software, that's the end product? Then it would determine, you know, what I saw was, okay, now you need a zone text amendment, because we're not talking anything about a product being developed here. And I'm not getting anywhere near to like manufacturing where, you know, you're just going to constantly make a widget. It's more or less R&amp;D for a prototype, and then that prototype, if you were to go into manufacturing, would not be allowed in either the specific plan or zoning code as it stands now. So there was a little clarity I needed there. So going off of these four categories, those types of uses are currently allowed with the director's interpretation.
Greg, can you speak about the healthcare, the one that Ms. Camacho talked about? Care use, please?
I guess I need a little bit more explanation and talk about that. Again, our permitted use is office, including medical. You know, if it's medical or psychological, social services, I would definitely categorize that as similar. If you're looking at small procedures, then maybe we need to do a zone text and add them.
Thank you. So where are you at, Greg?
So I'm concluded, based on those four categories, we could allow those types of uses as it stands now.
Excellent, okay. Councilmember Patterson, the mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Christopher Beck, our real estate consultant. I don't know if he's available.
Yeah.
I'm here, Councilmember Patterson.
Just a quick question, based upon what was shared by the Charles Companies representative and what was shared by our planning director. I believe my question is, do you, from your professional experience from a real estate perspective, do you feel that it's necessary to have the specific language, all the specific language that was requested by the Charles Company? Or do you think the general language that's presented by our planning director is sufficient to be able to attract a quality user?
Sure, appreciate the question, Councilmember Patterson, and good morning to the council and whatnot. There's some good points brought up by Ms. Camacho as it relates to clarifying in greater detail some of those uses. So to say a user's going to look at the specific code and feel comfortable, there is some, there is some points that Ms. Camacho makes in her presentation that are relevant to those specific uses. I think the message to users in the marketplace is that the, you know, assuming that the council and whatnot are acceptable to some of these measures is that, hey, look, we're open to concepts that are maybe a little different than what's in the existing specific plan and more specifically to those types of uses. I think most of those uses are in conjunction with what we previously discussed in both our working sessions and in previous council meetings. And there are a few things in there that may not necessarily be copacetic with the community itself, but to answer your question, Councilmember Patterson, I do feel that there were some points in Ms. Camacho's presentation that would further clarify and give a comfort level to those users in the marketplace to know that once they come, you know, to the city of Hawthorne, they would be able to function as a business without any ambiguity.
I have a question for Ms. Camacho. Remind me, when was our last meeting? There we go, our last presentation that you guys gave? It was how many weeks ago?
The date of it?
Because you had mentioned the presentation, the three working sessions, this has been the third. Second was how many weeks ago?
I believe it was on April 19th, the second study session?
It's about a month ago?
Correct.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, the difference between your presentation then and this presentation, besides the perspective about legal recourse or not that was given in the beginning, the presentation seems very similar to the last one, except for there was some language mentioned in this presentation that you would want included... Uh language miss mentioned in this presentation that you would want included in our zoning code. Is that correct? Is that about the only difference?
Well, I think one of the differences that, you know, we've highlighted here is that we heard the concern that the city has expressed. Um in in the study session and I think in some previous conversation or subsequent conversations that we had with staff. That the specific plan was something that they thought was um sufficient for some of the things that we were discussing. And that was something that they wanted to preserve as much as possible. And so we've tried to focus on ways that we could work with the specific plan. And focus on the zoning code and then looking at the zoning code itself and trying to think about where the changes would be needed and and started that process. So, you know, I mean, I think that there's not much more that we can do in these study sessions to get too far beyond that with specific language. We've tried to provide some examples of some of the language and the specific things that we would include and show you sort of how we would start to mark it up. Um but I don't think that's a process we can finish, you know, in these kinds of study sessions. So I think that what we wanted to do was lay out the parameters that, you know, we would put the cap on the number of residential units. We would, you know, provide the, you know, the activation of Hawthorne in the public spaces, sort of as, you know, essential items. Um and that we would broaden the uses in the ways that we have been discussing, as you point out, but but giving, trying to give a little bit more specificity. About about that and about what that might look like. Um and it's not finished, of course, but you know, that's, I think that's really what we're, what we're sort of trying to do. And identify the next steps, which is the work program where we drill into that, you know, a little bit more specifically and come up with with the plan.
So, the last meeting, you guys had said that these adjustments needs to be made to our specific plan and and zoning. And I know I had requested the language that you would want included or or changed. And so you're saying that this month has still not been enough to provide that exact language.
Yeah, I think we provided a a start, which is what we, you know, and tried to show in in our in our presentation, but I don't think it's enough time. To to finish that process. I think that's that's correct, that this is a process that's going to get very technical. Um you know, we started to look at your definitions within the code, the way that they are used in the section on mixed um commercial. Uh trying to, you know, figure out how that would all come together. And, you know, again, it's 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 very detailed. So I think that, you know, that's a process we'd want to go through, um because we don't want to be out of sync with the rest of the code. Um so I don't think it's something that we could finish, but I think that we've made progress and and that's what we were trying to demonstrate in our presentation.
So you're saying that you were to identify changes need to be made, but it's gonna take a substantial amount of time to identify the specific changes?
I I think it will take some more time. You know, we've kind of tried to lay out in our, I think, second to last slide, a timeframe, you know, for doing this. So it's not open-ended and it's not something that would take forever, but you know, I think it will, i- it wasn't something we could do within a month. Um we were hoping to have sort of alignment on on what, where we would focus our changes. Because, you know, as we we did hear some concern about making changes within the specific plan itself and what that process would look like. So trying to get alignment that, you know, we'll focus on the zoning code as the area where the changes would be needed. And what the objective generally of that would be, and then and then drill down into the work plan with the specifics. Um and I think that, you know, in terms of the timeframe that we provided, um you know, we we looked at trying to finish the drafting of the technical changes. And amendments by, you know, the s- the end of the summer, July, August. This is something, you know, we need to engage with staff and and council. And, you know, work through all of that. Um but that's sort of, I think, what what we estimated as the timeframe for doing this, which I, which I don't think is unusual.
So you say it's about three to four months to identify the exact changes that you guys would wanna see?
Correct, and I think working also with with staff, you know, to have input on that, so it wouldn't be, you know, just a one-way communication.
And the i- in that work plan, you had suggested uh between the months of Ju- June, July. To uh provide certain studies or to conduct certain studies, about the exact language. What studies? Are you referring to?
These would be um studies that would be needed to support the SEQA analysis required. So, you know, if, for example, we wanted to do like sort of like a, you know, a trip bank or something like that, right? You know, we'd need to sort of analyze, you know, what what would be the number of trips that that would still um be possible within the. EIR for the specific plan without going outside of that, so we had to do a new EIR, those kinds of studies to try to determine whether, you know, the the kinds of uses. That are proposed um would be able to be justified as as within the envelope of the existing EIR. And we could show that, you know, when we got to the point of um of actually preparing the SEQA document. Um so we always try to get started on those studies as early as we can, because they can take some time, so we would, the intent is to do all of this simultaneously.
And just make sure I understand that, essentially what you guys are asked for today is a work plan that takes out through November. And if we don't, then we will be subject to litigation. Is that what you guys were saying?
No, I think I'll I'll let Mr. Rohr talk a little bit about, um you know, the the logistics of of the litigation. But just to clarify on the timeline, I think the November um timeframe is when we would hope that the changes could be finally approved by city council. Um you know, there's always some leeway in that schedule, but that's the end of the public hearing process. So, you know, that amendment process would be complete in our in our um hopes by by November timeframe. But um maybe we can have Mr. Rohr talk a little bit about um what what the next step would be with respect to the the litigation piece.
Yeah, so so then let's be clear, we haven't. I I would say we haven't brought litigation against the city. I think there is available litigation. Under the idea of inverse condemnation, but it has never been our goal to get involved with any of that, right? Our goal has been the opposite. Our goal is to get get something done. So I think the issue is here is. And again, this is, I I don't wanna bl- I don't wanna put this, I I don't mean to sound pejorative, because it's not about you guys. But when Arnie was the um city manager, right, he came up with this theory. It's in emails that we got in our public records request, where he's like, oh yeah, we don't like the Gabes. So we're gonna uh start finding them for anything we can think to find them about, and and, you know, that's what we're gonna do. Gabes brought in a buyer during that period, um Arnie spent the session trashing them. Nobody wants to come into a place where they see controversy. Um you know, nobody wants something to be subject to director's discretion. When we're in a lawsuit with regard to director's discretion, essentially. I mean, we have a use that's going on there. That the city is alleging is non-conforming, we're stating that it is conforming. And we were getting citations and we kept saying, please stop citing us, it's not helpful. And we came to this sort of interim agreement and the citation stopped, which we're grateful for. Um and then we said, well, let's find a a larger uh settlement under which we can A, work on entitlements. And B, quite frankly, work on a sale. There's space in there. If we sell it, you know, what happens then? If we go into escrow, how do we disclose it, right? That's written into there, because we wanna be able to plan for that as well. Um so it isn't that we would put this back in, th- th- that we're trying to to litigate it. We just A, want our money back that we think we've paid in unwanted fines and B, don't want any more fines. So you guys have sort of agreed, well, we're not giving you the money back right now, but we're not gonna find you while we do that. Uh wh- while we do this this exercise. So. I- i- if the fines were to start again, right, we. And and if we weren't delaying our court hearing, right, then we would fall back into litigation sort of by default. So I don't mean it as like a threat, like, oh, we're going to sue you if you don't do that. It's not that at all. It's like, you guys already brought this action against us. You could drop it at any point, right? You could just say, well, forget it. We're not gonna charge you any of those fines. It's over, and you know what? It would be over. You're you guys are the driver of the litigation. Us, not us.
So I just wanna try to understand, what what you guys are requesting is to uh. Continue to suspend the fines through the end of the year while you guys figure things out. So you're saying that.
Yes, sir.
That's essentially what you guys are asking.
I would, I would like it that it might be longer than the end of the year, if that's the amount of time that's needed, right? Because that's what we've put in there, but yes, absolutely. All we're really saying is.
That's essentially the goal of your request, is to suspend the fines.
Yes, sir.
Who knows amount of time while you guys figure out what you guys want from us.
Absolutely, sir.
Try to make the property more attractive for either leasing or sale.
Yes, no, that's ob- sir, you you just hit it. Like, there's no really, there's nobody's admitting to anything. You're not saying, oh, you're right. Or, you know, we're just sort of kicking that cow down the road while we continue to work together. That's all we're really interested in. Um and and you just hit the nail on the head. Thank you.
Those are my questions. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, um so my questions are basically addressed to Ms. Camacho. So, um. You indicated that uh implementing the desired uses would require amending the zoning code. Um and it was, and and if I'm not mistaken, it's based on the zoning code language. That says uses that are not expressly listed above are prohibited. So far, am I correct?
That is definitely a a a big part of our concern. I wouldn't say it's the only one, but you know, absolutely, that is, that is part of 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 the concern. That we have. You know, I I I am a zoning lawyer and I have clients ask me all the time, can I do this in this part of the city? And they are looking for certainty from me. And if I have to say, well, you know, if the city interprets it this way, or maybe we can shoehorn it into this or that. But it might be limited to this, and they're not totally sure what they're doing, that's of a lot, that's of great concern to them. So I think that, you know, there's a number of 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 things that we'd like to see clarified.
So my concern is shortening the process. Uh based on, based on your. Uh your suggestions, your recommendations, you're looking at. Changing the zoning code to specify the possible uses, all of the possible uses. That someone may come in and want to implement. My recommendation would be, or my suggestion would be. Why not do it the other way? And I'm asking you if this is something that that is attractive to you. Instead of change, making specific changes to the zoning code, make specific cha- make changes to the language. That says uses that are not expressly listed above are prohibited. In other words, negotiate that language with our staff so that we could possibly put in something that. I don't know, maybe would say uses that are not expressly listed above are subject to negotiation. Or something to that effect, so that it's not a hard and fast prohibition, so that anyone coming in with a use. That is not, that that we don't have, um that is not specifically allowed in the code. Would would not think that their use would be prohibited. They would think, oh, well, I I can negotiate this and maybe it will be allowed. What do you think about that suggestion? I, um my my thought is that it would considerably shorten the process. We wouldn't have to go back through all of the. Possible uses and and go through the the exercise that's going to take months. And and possibly lang- change that language and that could be done right away.
So I think that focusing on that language is is helpful, but I don't think it's enough, because I don't think that a negotiation is going to provide a lot of comfort. To a potential user. They will look for a city where they have certainty that that their use is allowed, not where they have to go and negotiate. Whether their use might be permitted and what all the different constraints might be, and then go through a permitting process. You know, I mean, that's just, that's a huge deterrent to an end user who's coming in and looking at it. And again.
Well, that was, that was, that was just my s- my suggestion.
Yeah, I I appre- I appreciate that.
Just my suggested off-the-cuff language. It doesn't have to be that language, but I'm asking. Instead of having the hard and fast language that says uses that are not expressly listed above are prohibited. Could we change that language to give comfort to a possible end user?
I thi- I think we could give some comfort. I don't think it's enough comfort to achieve the objective that we all have of finding users for this large site. I I think we would need more.
Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh before I go to Ms. Camacho and uh and Mr. Paul Row. Uh I wanna ask Greg and Melissa to 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 give me an idea. For example, when we ta- when we're talking about zone amendment and also the specific downtown specific plan. For example, in our code, right, on the the seventeen point uh two nine point zero one zero. Ms. Camacho mentioned, give us a list of the desired users, right? Uh on her slide. Those desire users, for example, if you would just include them in our. In our zoning, right, um can can that be done by administrative approval? Or or it has to be going to public hearing and et cetera, et cetera?
Um I, i- a zone text amendment would go through a formal procedure.
Uh huh.
Um that would take council approval in the end. Um what I was going to mention was that. The uses um that were specified in there, um the ones that could be interpreted. Uh by me, such as, um say, uh they wanted explicit. Saying of creative office space. It already allows office space with my interpretation. I would say that's similar to to office. It's creative office. Those are are very simple to make and don't need, uh you know, it's just be more specific. There there's one use I saw on there, and I don't have the slides, but that caught my eye was urban farming. So that that would be a longer process, if you even wanted to allow such a thing. And I'm I'm, I'd actually have to look up what that is. I imagine it's maybe marijuana cultivation or something. I don't know. I don't know what urban farming is, so maybe that one just caught my eye that I don't exactly know what that is, so um.
So so let me, let me read them again. It said, research and development, aerospace, creative office, creative commerce. Digital streaming, e-commerce, flex use, healthcare, laboratory, media content production. Urban farming. Those are the desires. And 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 believe it or not, like we said in the past. All these, we are willing to put any commercial there when on or any industrial. But uh because like Ms. Camacho mentioned before, we, it, they would have gone, you know, uh through a a condition use permit. And 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 if that was allowed, we will allow it. It doesn't mean that we say, we prohibit. Because Ms. Camacho put, mentioned the word prohibit. We are not prohibit nothing to that mall. Uh the plan was for these three months, for the uh Charles Company to give us a plan. That the city could approve or could modify based on agreement on both parties. Now, let's go back to Ms. Camacho, because I don't know if I heard right. You said to amend our zoning to allow six, six oh eight, uh six hundred and eight unit. Uh housing? That's what you mentioned in one of the slides, because I don't have them in front of me.
Sure, to to clarify that, it was to limit the number of residential uses in all of the mixed commercial, you know, basically in the mall. Um to six hundred and eight units, because that was what we understood the council had requested, that it not be a larger residential development. That there be only the smaller component of a maximum of six hundred and eight. So residential is allowed today, but this would be a limit, a cap on the number of units.
Okay, so because because you you mentioned that our zoning um a- appeals more to residential than commercial. But we keep saying we want more commercial, more commercial, more commercial, right? That's what we've been saying all along, okay, for almost for these past twenty years. We want commercial, commercial, commercial. And and believe me, uh like we said, yeah, we, because our co- our downtown specific plan did call for twenty-four. Unit per acres, that that is 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 right there. Uh uh that that, i- you know, we could eventually maybe. Compromising something because there was a plan in twenty sixteen that was approved for uh the six hundred unit. Uh a mixed-use commercial and 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 residential, right? And then uh you guys didn't develop that that mall. Now, I'm kinda like a little bit struck, because uh you guys come talking about litigation and all this stuff. Good faith, blaming the past uh city manager and a city attorney, but you have to understand that city attorney and 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 the city manage. Uh sometimes they didn't do those decisions by themselves, because the plan, when when you guys brought some plan or some or some uh. A potential developer that wanted to buy that mall, it was, it was, it was open. And 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 I understood that time that our city, the past city attorney and and Arnie. Said that, you know, we are open to negotiate and discuss anything. Uh I believe Charles Company is the one who walk away from 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 selling the mall, okay? Now. Again, I'm kinda struck when when you guys say prohibit, and then you guys have not. and then you guys have not presented with a plan to develop that mall. And I, what I understand, your presentation, uh, we met on April nineteen, and I request, based on your presentation, that you talk about a tax amendment, a zoning tax amendment on downtown specific plan amendment, uh, we, we asked Charles Company to meet with our planning department and our, uh, lens, land user, Melissa attorney, to give us, to work on those details. What did you want to be amended and what, what you want to be amended on the special downtown specific plan and also in our zoning plan? So you guys, uh, didn't do that, we didn't do that. Now you, you took a whole four weeks and present us almost with the same thing that you presented us on the, on April nineteen about amending A, B, C, D. Now, I have to tell you, to me, you guys are stalling for time. You guys are stalling for time because this, this, this agreement ends on June first. And now you want us to go all the way to November. You want to extend this agreement. You're stalling for time. Uh, so you have, and, and according to this agreement, you were supposed to give us a plan to develop the mall. Not a plan to change our zoning code or changing our downtown specific plan. So to me is a tactic of, of, of stalling time, that you need more time. And like I said, the, the city is open to do business with Charles Company and you can propose anything you want and we will look at it. We will make compromise because we want that mall to be developed. That's about it all.
Councilman Montero, this is Paul Rohr. Let me, I think it's probably more in my basket than Elizabeth's on this. So, one, I don't know what purpose we would have by stalling for time. And that is not what we're doing, and if you want to go back to that, we can't. Second, I think that I was being discreet in maybe laying it on the feet of folks who weren't there anymore. And I was doing that out of kindness more than out of accuracy, and I apologize for that.
Thank you.
But I think that our problem is, is that, again, let's go into this. Right now, we're being cited for something that we think we have a right to do. And you guys are like, oh, you don't have a right to do it because it says clearly here, anything that's not explicitly permitted is not permitted. Okay, so we're getting messed with right now because of how do we say to somebody else, oh, come in, and we think by their good graces, just like all those other years and just like all those other developers who have failed to get anything done in Hawthorne, it's going to go great, right? That's not going to work. What we need to do is have clear boundaries. What we've tried to do is come up with a plan that gives clear boundaries on your behalf, right? Like no more than six hundred and eight units. Uh, you know, development along Hawthorne Boulevard, right? So giving you things that you want, making it clear that those must be included, but then making it clear that these other things are allowed. And I think that if you listen carefully to what your own planning staff is saying, I think they're taking a more expansive view, they're saying, well, you know, in us as little kings and in our discretion, we could allow creative office, but they're not saying, oh, and we could allow a laboratory, or we could allow a hospital, or we could allow, you know, manufacturing that's part of our R and D. I, I think they're, they're telling you they can't allow that. So we need to change it in order to allow the uses that are there. And that's what we're coming to you with. And if you want a, a specific plan, right? If you want something where we say, this is what we want to do. In order to do that, we need to have an end user. We need to have a buyer or we need to have a tenant. And we are out there right now, working as hard as we can to get one of those things. But what we need is, we need your help to get there. And the way we get your help is by putting a big smiley happy face on our relationship together that shows that the city of Hawthorne and the owners are here to do business, not to fight with one another. That's what we're asking for.
Okay, so, so, so if that, if that's the case, Mr. Paul, uh, let, let's, uh, because what our staff, and, and I agree with Ms. Valentine, let's do this, uh, this amendment that you guys want, uh, this tax, uh, zoning tax amendment. Let's do that, uh, you know, uh, quickly, the process, you know, and streamline the time. So we don't want this thing to be dragging up to the fall. So let's do it, let's do it quickly. Because like I said before, uh, we actually told you the last meeting on, on April nineteen, sit down with our staff, tell them what you need to be, uh, uh, changing, you know, our, amending our tax zoning, uh, uh, tax zoning, whatever, and then the town's, right? Tell our staff so we can, this meeting was supposed to come back to us and say, okay, Charles Company met with our planning department and our lawyers, and this is what they wanted to be changed. And, and we could actually give, would give you a, a yes go to make those amendment change.
But you, you, but sir, you can, you can't because you wouldn't have had the environmental studies for it. I think that's why, so you don't have the power here to do that.
But that's the kind of thing, but that kind of, those are the kind of things that today probably would be much easier for us to say, okay, so the, uh, the sequel needs to be done by this time, uh, you know what I mean? Uh, this, this traffic study needs to be done by this time. So we already would have a, a conscious, a, a, an agreement timetable basis on that conversation that you guys had on the twenty-sixth of, of April uh, with Ms. Cosway and, and, and Mr. Beck and Greg and, and our planning director.
No, absolutely, Councilmember Montero. Um, and I'm sorry for the noise here. I, I do want to say though, that we really did respond, we listened to what your staff members said and responded to it. We had a meeting with, uh, staff and council where the discussion of the specific plan came up. And they were adamant, and I would say convincing, that we don't need to revise the specific plan. So we said, hey, if we don't need to revise it, we don't want to revise it. We're cutting that out. We hear you guys, and if we can do this with the zone tax amendment, like you say, let's go do it that way. So it's not like we didn't listen to them. And when we're giving you the timeline for trying to get it done, it's an aggressive timeline. I mean, the problem is, I mean, you know these things, that all of the sequel stuff, doing all of this properly through your, not your required, you know, the state required procedure, it's not like you came up with it. But we have to do it all correctly through that. And that's how I think Ms. Camacho got to that public hearing date in November. Now, maybe that's, you, you know, maybe we could work with, with, uh, your staff. I mean, look, if you guys say, well, we think we can do it quicker, we can think blah, 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 right? We're, we're, we're not here trying to, we're, we're saying what we think it will take based on our experience. If you have some faster way to do it or some sort of streamlining, we, we're grateful for it. I mean, in the same way, we responded when they said, don't touch the specific plan. We said, great, if we don't have to, let's do it. We want the simplest answer possible. We are completely with you, uh, council member, with regards to, um, to, 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 to wanting this to go quickly. Um, I think that, you know, everything that people say is true. Like when, when, um, Mr. Beck said, hey, it's a great time for financing. You know what? It is. So let's get this done while we can do it. There's no one here who wants to go more slowly.
Yeah, exactly, because you know, more you wait, you know, the, the money and interest rate is going to go up. So then you have, you have more, you have more issues. But that's what I'm saying. You know, the city of Hawthorne, we, we are begging you guys to develop that mall. You know, uh, we praying every day for that mall to be developed. And, 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 and that's what I'm saying, that we are not prohibit anything. We are willing to compromise with you guys, Charles Company. If you said we wanted to develop that mall and, and we are willing to compromise with you guys. Because that mall has been there for, you know, more than two decades. And, and like Ms. Williams said, we need to do something about it. And, and we are, we are trusting you guys that you coming on a good faith, that you want to work with us to accomplish ultimate goal to develop that mall. That, that is what we want. Thank you.
All right. So, look, I'm going to just be straightforward. I'm, I'm not happy, I'm not happy where we're at. And right now, all we're doing is debating like the zoning approach, CUP approach, uh, whatever the approach, the mechanism on being able to get this thing entitled or zoned. But we are no closer to getting a finalized palette and spread of uses for this site. We're not closer to that, so I don't care if you got lawyers in there and um, the, the, the young lady, Ms. Camacho, who's doing this. But we don't have a finalized palette, we don't know what we're working towards. We're just debating all this other stuff. So I'm really not happy, uh, where we at. And, um, Mr. Rohr can say all his little comments about, you know, what he subliminal or under, you know, trying to indicate what they might do. But we have our set of lawyers too, so I'm not concerned about that. So, uh, we just need to talk a little bit more serious. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Christopher Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, council. In just a couple of quick, I guess, uh, questions for, um, Ms. Camacho, Mr. Rohr, in addition to, um, the representative from the Charles Company, just for clarity purposes. I think what I heard, if I'm not mistaken, is sort of the chicken or the egg, if correct me if I'm wrong. Meaning you need the clarification as it relates to these, these, these specific, um, zoning measures in order to go attract the appropriate user group. Has there been any, if, if I'm, if my interpretation is wrong, please let me know. But if, if, if my interpretation's correct, I'd like to continue. And that is, has there been any contemplation from the, um, end user or the owner of the property? Are they looking at only specifically doing a built-to-suit concept? Or is there a concept being contemplated internally as it relates to a built-to-spec, um, project?
Oh, I think I, I can answer that. And, and Sarah, as you, if you, if you need it. Here's what I think is, is sort of the dividing line. We came in here and we, we sort of started out with, because, because I think we thought, oh my gosh, you guys want to see shovels in the ground as quickly as possible. And we said, well, we could go shovels in the ground on spec, um, right now for a whole bunch of units. And what we heard from the council is, is, yeah, yeah, you know, don't put that shovel in the ground. We don't want a whole bunch of units. We don't want any more units than what we said we want in two thousand fifteen. So we went back and said, okay, we hear you. That being said, right, what we talked about, and you know this, Mr. Beck, in our own conversations, what we talked about, one of the great things that we have here is that we have a, a significant sized site where you could do something of an order of magnitude that you might not be able to do someplace else, right? So once you start talking like that, you're talking in very large scale. Um, and you're talking about something that likely cannot be done on spec, but has to be done once we found the user. Now, and, and, and I use, I keep using user because for the entitlement standpoint, we don't care if that's a buyer or if that's a tenant, right? So like, if Google were to come and say, we want Google headquarters there and we'll only do it if we can buy it, okay. You know, but if they came and said, we're happy to ground lease it, okay too. But I think the answer that, that, to, to your question is, is yes, we're dependent on finding, you know, sort of an anchor, major usage, major user before we can start doing much of anything there. And, and that's why we've wanted that flexibility to go in because we don't know. Is that major user Google or SpaceX or, um, you know, uh, I, 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 you know, I'm running out of examples. If I were creative, I'd have a great job. But you know, who is that user? And that's why we're trying to make this open where we can provide certainty for them. So if we go through this exercise, let's say we finish it in November, or let's say it's October or December, whatever can be done, right? We can then have an easier time bringing somebody in who, one, can know that they have assurance that they're, they're investing, you know, tens of millions in something that, that where they can do what they want to do. And we, they, they won't take a long time for that entitlement to get up and running. That's part of what we're trying to say here is let's be clear with what our expectations are from both sides. Like you guys have said, not too many units, must activate Hawthorne, you know, all of those things. So that we embed that in there and somebody new, um, and I don't want to say new, but an end user, whether it's, you know, through us or a buyer, right? Comes in and says, oh yeah, we can do what we want. And, you know, this is how we're going to do it. Because, you know, these are huge projects that take years and years to pull off.
Sure, Paul, Paul, may I, may I just, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, call up please, if that's okay? Um, thank you, Paul, I appreciate that. The, the, the other comment or question I have, and this may not be the appropriate forum in, in not here to talk about pricing or any of that, but on a sale basis, you know, has it been determined internally, um, within the, for your client, Paul, and Ms. Withers, for your, for your firm, uh, Charles Company, has there been a dollar amount that's been established that would be an acceptable sale price? And again, I'm not asking for that number here, I'm not asking for any of that. I'm just curious to know if that's been established internally, like, hey, if we get X, we'll, 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 you know, sell the property, for, for example.
I, look, I think the answer is deal specific, but I mean, it's a matter of record that they, we, you, you know, you guys know it, we've never said anything otherwise, that we've negotiated with people and that we get offers and that we're out there. So, so I, I'm sure it's, you know, deal by deal a, and, and what terms are embedded in there in terms of what the exact pricing is. But, and, and no pricing is being offered on the street, which I don't think is unusual right now for this kind of deal, right? It's a seller's market, I think that's how people have been handling it. So, so yeah, we're out there. My understanding is, is this is out there, and you're a broker, you're going to know better than me, right? But I think this is out there, um, on, on the lease market and on the sale market, you know, actively. And I think you've said to us before that you know it's out there actively. And, and, and I believe that's correct.
Well, you, you know, what I did say, Paul, was, was I think your synopsis is correct. In today's environment, most assets such as this, which are very, very difficult to find, do not have asking prices. No question, I, I won't quibble that. I guess I'll frame up the question a little bit more detailed. That is, and maybe you don't know the answer to this, but is there a number? And I'm not asking for that number, but is there a number that's been bracketed um, within your client or, or maybe Ms. Withers can touch on this? Is there a number that just says, hey, look, we're out of here? I think part of the challenge is, what I'm trying to, 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 to figure out is, um, you know, what that dollar amount would be, um, on it, on a disposition. And if we don't know what that dollar amount is, you don't, again, you don't need to share it, but I'm sure there's got to be a number that's been bracketed internally. And I realize it's not just price, there's due diligence, there's environmental, there's a bunch of other aspects that roll into a transaction. Price obviously being one of the most important. That's really the question because, um, if you guys could touch on that and let me know, that would be great. It'd be helpful to know. Typically, in my experience in dealing with assets such as this size, typically there is an internal number that, um, groups will be, uh, satisfied with to, to move on. And by no means am I saying that that's the case here, but more of a question.
I mean, it's actually incredible that you would ask that being a broker. Especially when you have people on this call that have already discussed at the meeting with developers. We're the landowner. We intend to redevelop the site or sell it to a viable entity. And that has been all along, okay? Not too long ago, and I think maybe, um, there might have been somebody on the council when Jenny Lambert was, um, on the council. And we went through the entire process and she was the only deciding vote, no, on a project. We've had many times where we've come forth with the city, open arms, and everybody knows, um, the people here, uh, because they have always been very forthcoming. And we've brought tenants and time and time again, they've gone away. So this is why this is so critical right now, because we are trying to work with you in good faith. The last situation that we had, uh, several years ago with your city attorney and the city manager on the call that I was on, they basically said, we want reasonable period. And they, it was very negative, it, it was very discouraging. And when people are, uh, making decisions on hundreds of millions of dollars to develop into, uh, a site, they, they need to at least feel warm and fuzzy inside. To be able to, if they have to go down a road, to know that there's some type of support. Or at least, you know, a solid no is better than a maybe yes. And that has been our experience.
Okay, uh, no, but Mr. Beck, hold on.
Yes, sir.
No, I'm, Ms., Ms. Withers, you okay? You, you completed the statement?
No. And I want you to know that we have the utmost, um, intention to work with everyone here to get something done. We don't want the- We don't want the property to sit in the condition that it's sat in. Um, and we've agreed, we either are going to sell it or we're going to redevelop it. But this can't continue. And so that is um, w- we do have, uh, that is our good faith. And we want to proceed. And we want to make sure that one day, we're either standing in front, well, we're standing in front of a ribbon-cutting with everyone. That's our goal.
Thank you, Ms. Withers. Okay, um, before anybody goes further, I'm go- I'm going to address that in particular because uh, there's, there are residents watching and we have a very active community that's really taking this item very seriously. And uh, I believe that there was a misrepresentation on the city's uh, approach with the with the with the Charles Company. The city's not just going to build anything, okay? We have the interests of our community uh, in mind, and so we're just not going to build anything. I have in my drawer over here, well, can you guys see my finger over here? I have my drawer like about five plans, five plans, and we've sent them back to say, hey, uh, you know, the 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 focus has been residential, we need the commercial. So that's been the theme all the way since the beginning. So, about three or four years ago, uh, there were five council members that signed a agreement with Mr. Armengabe here in the office. Mayor Pro Tem was there, Councilmember Angie English. And we went through the whole uh, ceremony of signing this in public. Uh, we even modified our specific plan to be able to accommodate um, certain uses almost kind of particularly just uh, focusing on the Hawthorne Mall in particular. That was high priority. And we had, we signed an agreement that we were going to get things uh, built. So I just want the residents to know that it's not true. The city of Hawthorne reached an agreement, we we uh, we compromised even when it came to the residential aspect. And we went through the whole little show, the show up there signing, was it just the show on behalf of the Charles Company or what? Okay, man, that's the question. But let's take it if it was sincere, but why, why wasn't there a groundbreaking? Why did I and Councilmember Watt at the time have to meet with the owner to let him know or try to emphasize that we needed that ground to be broken? And starting, permits were pulled a couple of times. So there was, there was nothing that happened. And we went through that whole, uh, I guess at this point ridiculous experience of having signed all the, signed that stuff in public. So, for the residents out there, the city of Hawthorne has reached a point where it compromised with the Charles Company, but the Charles Company did not produce and kept their end of the bargain, okay? I mean, that's that's my opinion, that's the opinion of many, and I mean, many people watched that meeting and everybody remembers that in the community. So, um, I respectfully disagree uh, with 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 uh, Ms. Withers. But um, I I think uh, both sides here in the conversation have said, you know, they're said their piece. Uh, we need to reach, I think we're close to the finalization of this meeting. Uh, if uh, Ms. Camacho and uh, um, Mr. Rohr could produce their PowerPoints and forward that to them, so we can enter them to record and review them and ponder on them. I think we're going to be, we'll be able to figure out what needs, what needs to happen next. Any final comments, Mr. Beck and Mayor Pro Tem? Let's just finalize this and move ahead.
Um, I I just want, I wanted to um, to reiterate what you said, Mayor, about the um, about the 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 lack of good faith. The lack of good faith, in my view, has been on the part of the Charles Company. I see no need to relitigate that issue because I remember exactly what you remember, that probably about four or five years ago, we approved a beautiful development that was brought to us in person by Armengabe that we all signed and approved. And I believe it was called Lax Millenia. It was a combination of housing and and retail. And um, it it it, we, the the whole community was excited about it. And then it just died. I have no idea what happened and why that project was not built, but we certainly approved it. So, to imply that the bad faith has been on our side is really insulting. On the other hand, I want to get something done. So I refuse to break off negotiations because I'm, I feel insulted. What I would like to see done is for the Charles Company to consider what we've said here today. Um, we do want to develop the mall. You want to develop the mall and we want to develop the mall. We have to find common ground. And um, I still want to go back to what I said. I I think our, the timeline is too long. Or looking at being in completing public hearings in November and still having nothing on the table. We probably could shorten that timeline. So I'm looking forward to trying to do that. Um, I suggested the the idea of changing the language in the zoning code that would be more expansive. Instead of saying uses that are not expressly listed above or prohibited, changing that language to allow for negotiation. Maybe you don't want to say negotiation, maybe you want to say something else. I was recommending changing that language as opposed to trying to change every specific um, use that could, uh, uh, addressing every single use that could possibly be um, a pro- proposed. That was my suggestion. I still think that's something that should be explored. In any case, um, I want to thank you for your time because um, I really think we've come a long way. I want to go further. Thank you.
Yeah, I really want to go ahead and just finalize the meeting. Uh, Mr. Beck, do you have any final comments? Super brief, let's just end the meeting.
I I do not, Mr. Mayor. I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, city council, no, well, but thank you um, for the Charles Company being here and the representatives. I know and I recognize that we we, both sides of the issue uh, had strong words, maybe stronger words in um, previous meetings, but you know, um, that happens when you're talking about things and negotiating or talking, discussing things at times. So, so, um, thank you all for being here. Uh, we will uh, we will finalize the meeting. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.